Good evening and thank you for coming to tonight's hearing. My name is Louis Mifflison and I will be the moderator for tonight's hearing on the Navy's Trident Support Facilities Explosive Handling Wharf Impact Statement, or EIS as it will be referred to numerous times tonight. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on the DIS. Here to receive your comments are Captain Pete Dawson to my left, Commander Officer, Commanding Officer of Naval Base Kitsap, Mr. Mark Roberts of Strategic Systems Programs, and Ms. Christine Stevenson, the EIS Project Manager from Naval Facilities Engineering Command Hopefully, all of you had the opportunity to talk with the many knowledgeable experts staffing the poster stations during the open house. Looked like we had pretty good discussions going on in there. The primary portion of -- purpose of this portion of the hearing is for the panel members to listen to your comments firsthand. They will not be answering questions during the phase of the proceedings. Comments and questions here will be addressed in the final EIS. Let's look at the agenda tonight. After this introduction, Captain Dawson will give a brief overview of Naval Base Kitsap Banger. Mr. Mark Roberts will then discuss the Trident program. Next, Ms. Christine Stevenson will brief you on the environmental impact analysis process and summarize the results reported in the draft EIS. The last item on the agenda, however, is the most important. The public comment session is your opportunity to provide information and make statements on the record. Your input ensures that the decision-makers can benefit from the knowledge of the local area and any environmental effects that you have or are knowledgeable of on the human, natural, or cultural environment that you think may result from the proposed action or alternatives. Keep in mind that the EIS process is intended to ensure the decision-makers will be fully informed about the potential environmental impacts associated with the various alternatives before they decide on a course of action. Please remember that comments on issues unrelated to this draft EIS are beyond the scope of this hearing. To make a request, to make a verbal comment tonight, we ask that you fill out a speaker comment card. I have quite a number of them already. It looks like they will take us through the end of the evening, near nine o'clock, which is when this hearing is scheduled to go to. Every speaker, including public officials, organizational spokespersons, and private individuals, will have three minutes each to provide his or her comments. If you don't feel comfortable standing up here, there are many other ways of providing comments. You can hand in the written comment sheets that were available in the room next door and still are. You can mail in your comments, or you can go on the website and enter them electronically. Just make sure that they're either received or postmarked by May 2nd in order to ensure that they are, in fact, included for consideration in the final EIS. And keep in mind that written comments are given the same weight and consideration as oral comments offered. With that, it is now my pleasure to introduce Captain Dawson.
Thank you, Louis. Welcome to the public hearing for the Explosive Handling Wharf Draft EIS. My name is Captain Pete Dawson. I'm the Commanding Officer of Naval Base Kitsap. I live in Seabec, Washington, on the Hood Canal, and I am a career submariner. I've lived in Kitsap County at Naval Base Kitsap Banger, or have been stationed at Naval Base Kitsap Banger for most of the last 12 years of my career. I want to thank you on behalf of the United States Navy for attending the public hearing this evening. This is one of the three public hearings the Navy is holding in Western Washington on the Explosive Handling Wharf Draft EIS. As Louis mentioned, we hope that you had a chance to visit the poster stations this evening and meet with the Navy project team members. At the conclusion of this presentation, you will have the opportunity to make oral comments regarding the environmental analysis. Naval Base Kitsap Banger is located on the Hood Canal, approximately 20 miles west of Seattle. The base was originally commissioned in the late -- in the early 1940s as ammunition depot Banger, and later in the 1970s as naval submarine base Banger. Naval Base Kitsap Banger is part of Naval Base Kitsap, which includes facilities in Bremerton, Banger, Keyport, Jackson Park, and Manchester. Naval Base Kitsap is the largest naval base in the Pacific Northwest and the host command of the Navy's fleet throughout the West Puget Sound. The primary mission of Naval Base Kitsap Banger from World War II through the Korean conflict and Vietnam era was to store, handle, and load ammunition onto Navy transport ships. In 1964, the base mission was expanded to include Polaris missile stowage. In 1977, the base became the West Coast home port of the Trident submarine fleet. Naval Base Kitsap Banger provides berthing and support services to Navy Ohio-class ballistic missile submarines referred to as Trident submarines. The entirety of Naval Base Kitsap Banger, including the land areas and adjacent waters, water areas in Hood Canal, is restricted from general public use. While fulfilling our mission, protecting the environment is a priority of the Navy. The Navy is committed to protecting the physical and natural environment and has established a successful track record of environmental stewardship while meeting our mission. To accomplish our environmental stewardship goals, the Navy implements protective measures on land and in the water to reduce potential effects on the marine, terrestrial, and human environment, and to ensure public safety. I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Mark Roberts to discuss the Trident program.
Thank you, Captain Dawson. Good evening. My name is Mark Roberts, and I am from the Navy's Strategic Systems Programs. Strategic Systems Programs is the action proponent for this project. As part of the nation's sea-based strategic deterrence mission, Trident submarines play a critical role of great strategic importance for the United States. The Trident program consists of submarine-launched ballistic missiles, which have been a vital part of the Navy's strategic deterrence mission since 1956, and are an integral component of the Navy's ability to defend the nation. Naval Base Kitsap Banger is the only naval installation on the West Coast with the specialized infrastructure to support the Trident program. Specialized infrastructure includes buildings, utilities, and systems used to support the missile production shops, missile maintenance, missile component storage, and missile handling cranes, in addition to providing security and operational port facilities. These facilities support every aspect of the Trident program operations, services, and systems. Next, Ms. Christine Stevenson from Naval Facilities Engineering Command Northwest will tell you about the Navy's proposed action and provide an overview of the draft EIS and the environmental analysis process.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Christine Stevenson, and I'm the Project Manager for the Explosives Handling Wharf EIS. I'm here tonight to give you an overview of the findings contained in the draft EIS. The draft EIS was prepared by the Navy to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. The draft EIS represents compliance with this environmental statute and is an important part of the Navy's overall commitment to environmental stewardship. This draft EIS is a result of extensive studies and analyses and consideration of public and agency comments received during the scoping period. The Navy is the lead agency for the EIS. In addition to their roles as regulators, the National Marine Fisheries Service and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are cooperating agencies pursuant to federal regulations. As regulators, the National Marine Fisheries Service and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers help to ensure that the EIS and the proposed action are in full compliance with appropriate environmental laws and regulations under their jurisdiction. As cooperating agencies, they provide early review of the proposed action, alternatives, and analysis methods. The Navy proposes to construct and operate a second explosives handling wharf adjacent to but separate from the existing explosives handling wharf at the Naval Base Kitsap Banger waterfront to support future Trident program requirements. The proposed action consists of in-water and land-based construction and operations to support the existing number of Trident submarines at Naval Base Kitsap Banger. The proposed second explosives handling wharf would consist of a covered operations building, six lightning towers, and a warping wharf. The covered building would lie approximately 600 feet offshore at water depths of 60 to 100 feet. The long extension is used to line up submarines before they move into the building. Trestles would connect the wharf to shore. The purpose of the Navy's proposed action is to support future program requirements for the eight Trident submarines currently homeported at Naval Base Kitsap and the Trident II Strategic Weapons System. A second explosive handling wharf is needed because the existing explosives handling wharf alone would not be able to provide enough operational days per year to support the Trident program due to wharf availability and changing operational and weapons system NEPA requires a federal agency to consider a no-action alternative. Under the no-action alternative, a second explosives handling wharf would not be built. Operations would continue at the existing explosives handling wharf. However, unless a second wharf were built, the Navy would not have the required facilities to perform future routine operations and upgrades required to maintain the current fleet of Trident submarines at Naval Base Kitsap Banger. Therefore, the no-action alternative would not meet the purpose and need of the proposed action. The no-action alternative is analyzed in the draft EIS to provide a baseline for comparing the action alternatives. Five action alternatives are analyzed in the draft EIS. The alternatives are based on the following criteria: capability for meeting the Trident mission; ability to avoid or minimize environmental impacts; citing requirements, including proximity to existing infrastructure; availability of waterfront property; constructability of essential project features; and explosive safety restrictions. The five action alternatives consist of combinations of two-access trestle layouts, separate or combined, and three-wharf support configurations: conventional-sized piles, large piles, or floating pontoons. This figure shows a view of the combined trestles under Alternative 1, the Navy's preferred alternative, and Alternative 2. Combined trestles would result in fewer piles and less area over shallow water than separate trestles, thereby reducing impacts on shallow water habitat and resources. Alternative 1 would use large piles as compared to the conventional-sized piles used in Alternative 2. Under Alternative 1, there would be approximately 200 fewer piles than Alternative 2, and pile driving would take between 75 and 150 fewer days. This is a view of the separate trestles under Alternatives 3 and 4. Alternative 3 would use large piles as compared to conventional-sized piles that would be used in Alternative 4. Separate trestles would result in about 40 more trestle piles and 0.3 acres of additional overwater area, including more area over shallow water than the combined trestle Alternatives 1 and 2. This is Alternative 5, the floating wharf alternative. Similar to Alternatives 1 and 2, access trestles would be combined over shallow water. This figure does not show the trestles. The floating wharf portion would be supported on large concrete pontoons and connected to pile-supported mooring dolphins. This alternative would use between 810 and 1,060 fewer overall piles, but would be larger than the other alternatives. The larger wharf would result in more than two additional acres of overwater coverage compared to the pile-supported wharf alternatives. This table provides a comparison of the action alternatives and is also included in the fact sheet packet you receive tonight. As a recap, the trestle layouts would either be combined or separate. Looking at the data presented here, combined trestles would result in fewer piles and less area over shallow water than separate trestles, thereby reducing impacts on shallow water habitat and resources. The wharf support would either be pile-supported, large piles, or smaller conventional-sized piles, or floating pontoons. The large pile-wharf alternatives would use fewer piles than conventional-sized piles, and pile driving would also take less time. The difference between a floating wharf and a pile-wharf is that the floating wharf alternative would use fewer piles than the other alternatives, but would be larger than the pile-supported wharves and have more overwater coverage. Piles would still be required for the trestles, the mooring dolphins, and the lightning towers. The Navy's preferred alternative is Alternative 1, the combined trestle-large pile-wharf, because it has fewer nearshore habitat impacts, less overwater coverage, fewer piles than the other pile-supported alternatives, and less upfront and lifecycle costs. In preparing the draft EIS, the Navy evaluated the potential effects of alternatives on the marine, upland, and social environment. The Navy used a comprehensive approach in assessing the potential effects on 26 different resource areas. We'll review some of those findings in this presentation. We encourage you, if you haven't already, to review the draft EIS, which presents the findings of the Navy's environmental analysis for each of these resource areas. We welcome your comments on the findings or the method of the analysis. Some impacts on the marine environment from construction activities are anticipated from the proposed action. Potential construction impacts would include sound from pile driving, seafloor disturbance, turbidity, and effects on marine species. No dredging would be required during construction or operation of the second facility. Construction would disturb marine habitat and species. Each action alternative would result in the loss of eelgrass and other marine habitat and would have long-term shading impacts. The Navy modeled three scenarios of pile driving sound, including impact hammer pile driving, vibratory pile driving, and combined impact hammer and vibratory pile driving. Pile driving would adversely affect seven species of marine fish that are protected under the Endangered Species Act. The facility would also interfere with the migration of juvenile salmon, some species of which are protected under the Endangered Species Act. Pile driving would result in behavioral disturbance and harassment of marine mammals and bird species protected under the Endangered Species Act, the Marine Mammal Protection Act, and the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. However, injury and mortality of marine mammals or seabirds is not expected. The Navy has developed a mitigation action plan included in Appendix F of the draft EIS, which includes current practices, best management practices, and specific mitigation measures to avoid, minimize, and mitigate the potential effects of the proposed construction and operation of a second explosives handling wharf. For the marine environment, some of the Navy's key proposed measures include performing in-water construction work from July 16th through February 15th, when juvenile salmon are least abundant; using an air bubble curtain to minimize underwater sound from pile driving; using a soft-start approach for pile driving to allow marine species to leave the immediate pile driving area; using vibratory rather than impact pile driving methods whenever possible to reduce sound levels; monitoring underwater sound levels; implementing monitoring programs for marine mammals and the Endangered Species Act listed Marbord Murelet; and compensating for potential impacts to aquatic resources through a proposed in-lue fee mitigation program or an alternative mitigation project within the Hood Canal watershed. The Navy is currently consulting with the National Marine Fisheries Service and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service under the Endangered Species Act, and with the National Marine Fisheries Service under the Magnuson Stevenson Act and the Marine Mammal Protection Act. Potential construction impacts on the upland environment would consist of disturbance of forests, shrublands, and wetlands. Construction activities would result in the temporary clearing of 5.8 acres of forest and shrublands, permanent loss of point acres of forest and shrublands, and permanent loss of 0.18 acres of wetlands. Disturbance to wildlife is also anticipated. There are no Endangered Species Act-listed terrestrial animals or plants in the project Under the Navy's mitigation action plan, some of the Navy's key proposed mitigation measures for upland impacts include implementing best management practices such as stormwater management, restoring 5.8 acres of vegetation that would be temporarily cleared for construction, using a soft-start approach for pile driving to allow wildlife to leave the immediate pile driving area, and implementing a proposed in-lue fee program or other mitigation project to offset the permanent loss of a small wetland area. The Navy would apply for permits from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Washington Department of Ecology. Under all action of alternatives, impacts on the social environment from construction activities are anticipated. Pile driving would produce sound that would be heard in some residential and recreational areas in and along Hood Canal. Marine traffic would impact Hood Canal users and vehicle traffic on the Hood Canal Bridge. There would be no increased risk to public health and safety. There would also be substantial benefits to the local economy from direct, indirect, and induced jobs during construction. Implementation of the proposed action would adversely affect fish, a commercial, recreational, and subsistence resource. Under the Clean Air Act requirements, air pollution emissions would not exceed thresholds for a major source for any alternative. The setting of the existing explosives handling wharf, which is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, would be adversely affected by construction. Site surveys did not identify any archaeological resources at the project site. However, there's a small potential for disturbance of buried resources during construction. Under the Navy's mitigation action plan, some of the Navy's key proposed mitigation measures for social impacts include ceasing construction activities between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM; pile driving would occur only during limited daylight hours; notifying the public about upcoming construction activities at the beginning of each construction season; issuing a notice to mariners about construction vessels operating in the project vicinity; and scheduling construction barge trips through the Hood Canal Bridge passage to avoid peak commuting hours. Under the National Historic Preservation Act, the Navy is in consultation with the state historic preservation office and affected tribes regarding potential impacts on cultural resources and any necessary mitigation measures. At this time, the Navy's completed the first three steps of the NEPA process. We're now at the fourth step, providing the draft EIS for public review. The EIS was initiated on May 15, 2009, and the Navy held three public scoping meetings in Paulsboro, Port Ludlow, and Seattle to enable the public to provide input on the proposed action, the alternatives under consideration, and environmental resources and issues to be analyzed. Government agencies, tribes, organizations, and the public were encouraged to submit comments at the scoping meetings or to provide written comments throughout the scoping period. The comments were received, were considered, in the preparation of the draft EIS and the preliminary designs of the project that we've discussed tonight. We're now in the middle of the 45-day public review period. This phase is an essential part of the NEPA process because it allows the public to review the draft EIS and comment on the Navy's analysis of potential environmental effects. We encourage you to provide your input here tonight or by May 2nd so that it can be considered for incorporation into the final EIS. All comments will be considered. The Navy is committed to keeping the community informed throughout the NEPA process. These public hearings are just one of many opportunities to share information about the draft EIS, and more importantly, to encourage your feedback and comments. Now I will turn the presentation back over to Louis to describe how to obtain more information and how to comment on the draft EIS.
Thank you, Christine. In addition to holding these public hearings, the Navy has established a website to make it easy for you to find and comment on environmental documents. It's a website address. You see it there, but it's on all of the materials that you received tonight, so there's no need to try and copy it down from this slide. The draft EIS is posted on the website, and it has additional background information and links to the fact sheets that are available here tonight. You may also review a hard copy of the draft EIS and other publicly available documents related to the EIS by visiting one of the six public libraries listed on the postcard or in the handout available here tonight, this being one of those six libraries. The public libraries and the project website contain project information, fact sheets, and background information for your review if you'd like additional information. I think it's clear by now that the Navy welcomes your review and input on the analysis contained in the draft EIS, and there's several ways for you to submit comments. We're going to be accepting oral comments here just a moment immediately after this presentation. Again, written comments can be submitted in writing here tonight, filling out the form, mailing them in, or electronically by going on the website. All comments should be postmarked or received by May 2, 2011, to ensure that they're considered in the final EIS. So we're now going to begin the oral comment portion of the public hearing. I would have cards from quite a number of people. If there's anyone else who would -- okay, so you don't need to come up here. Allison's going to help you out here. Just hold your card up, and Allison will collect it if you've got one. If you'd like to speak and you haven't filled one out yet, raise your hand, and she will also give you one for you to fill out. All right, so I see one more there. The Navy will accept your comments but will not respond to them at this time. Responses to public comments, again, will be provided in the final EIS. To ensure that we get an accurate record of what you have to say, please help me by respecting the following ground rules. First, I'm going to ask you to come up to this lectern here, and please speak clearly and slowly into the microphone. You only need to state your name and any organization you represent, if that applies. You don't have to provide an address or any other information. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. If you've prepared a written statement, you can turn it in again to Allison, who's seated up here, and if you can read it out loud and fit it within the three minutes, you're welcome to do that as well. Fourth, and final, please respond and honor any requests that I make for you to stop speaking when your three minutes is up. In order to make that as easy for you as possible, when you've reached 30 seconds left in your three minutes, I will hold up this yellow sign, attractively says 30 seconds. All right? That should make it easy for you to find a comfortable place to wrap up your comments. Not surprisingly, when you're three minutes up, it's a red one that says "End," so we try to make it really, really clear. Now, I see a gentleman with his hand up. The problem I have is that we're trying to get everything on this -- on the record. Unless you speak at the microphone, I'm going to anticipate a question like, can we give our time to somebody else? No. You get three minutes. Everyone gets three minutes. That's the way we do it. So you'll get a chance to ask your question. Are you one of the speakers signed up?
May I request that you add a one-minute card in there, please? It would really help.
If you would like a one-minute card...
Yes, please.
I've got a one-minute card. All right? So we try to anticipate all the questions if we possibly can. So yes, I will try and keep up with the one-minute card to boot. How's that? We aim to please, okay? So with that, what I'm going to do to try and -- so you don't all have to line up here. I hate that. Is I'm going to read several speakers ahead, and that way you'll know when you're coming up. I will say that there are some -- some number of chords and lines here. Please be careful. We don't want anyone tripping. The other thing is that in case you didn't hear it on your way in, if you parked in this facility, we have cards that we can give you that will allow you to park here for free, so make sure you grab one of those from, again, Allison. Does Brianna have any out front as well? And Brianna has some out front, too. So if you did park here, we don't want you to have to pay for that. So again, I'm going to read out the first several names so you know when your turn is going to come. And if I mispronounce any names, I apologize in advance. I'll do the best I can. Nancy Morris, followed by Todd Boyle, Priscilla White, Barbara Sapela, Norm Kegel, and after that would be John Rogers. So Ms. Morris, you are first.
Yes, hello. I'm Nancy Morris. I want to start off with a quote from Martin Luther King. "There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor politic nor popular, but they must do it because conscience tells them it is right." We as concerned citizens of this country and the planet must speak out before it is definitely too late. To plan another explosives handling wharf at Banger Naval Base to unload nuclear and conventional missiles in light of the current level of biosphere destruction and economic failure around the world seems to be the thinking of a sociopathic organization. It is inconceivable that our government would allow the Navy carte blanche with $782 million while important human service programs are severely cut or eliminated. This is only more evidence of a destructive, deluded thinking process from a military-industrial complex that even former President Eisenhower warned us against. We must stop now supporting any nuclear weapons proliferation and immediately acknowledge the need to find other ways for conflict resolution that do not destroy the entire biosphere we are all dependent on for our survival here in this country and worldwide. It would actually be a blessing to all to see the Trident nuclear missile submarines dismantled and the entire base made into a park of peace and a marine sanctuary for all life that is now continually threatened by weapons testing. We must stop and see that wasting money by building this wharf and continually expanding our capacity for nuclear harm is akin to a criminal action against all of us and all of humanity. So obviously, I'm against this project, and I wish that our money was put to far better and more humane uses. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, thank you very much for that. It's very difficult to get up and speak, and so not interrupting people, whether it's with boos or hisses or yays or whatever, or clapping, as long as you do it in between, that's great. So if we could keep that up, that'd be terrific. Mr. Boyle?
Todd Boyle. I'm a -- I was once at submarine school and was assigned to the Queenfish, but I never went. I quit the Navy. I'm opposed to nuclear weapons on principle. Towards the end of my comments, I'll point out some important environmental issues that don't appear in your report. But I'm opposed to nuclear weapons on principle because they're indiscriminate and they guarantee harms to civilian populations if they're ever used. They're not a defensive weapon. They're sort of a blackmail weapon. They're sort of a guaranteed mutual assured destruction weapon. I don't believe you know... I don't believe the United States is threatened. I'm sorry, I just don't. I think the Cold War was in a dangerous era during the 1950s, and by the 60s it was stabilized. And I think that since then, it's just, we have, what we have is institutional momentum and profit by industry and by the military itself. The U.S. has such an overkill capability that only the U.S. can really lead in downsizing of the nuclear force around the world, and I think that that's what we should happen. Okay? Instead of, instead of downsizing, what I see happening is just this insane momentum. And we, I think we need to stop building and start downsizing, start dismantling, stop improving, stop maintaining, okay? Just sort of like, let the air out of it. We don't need it. I also oppose excessive military presence in the state of Washington, which is like between 7% and 10% of the, of the economic activity in the state. I don't believe that we're, that this activity is defending us. In fact, it's making us less safe. Okay? I also oppose the U.S. military itself on moral grounds. It should be vastly downsized to the defense of the territory that's our jurisdiction. The U.S. has fought many wars since World War II, including Korea, Vietnam, and Iraq. We killed a couple of million innocent people in Korea who never attacked the United States or threatened the United States. We killed millions more in the Vietnam War, and there were somewhere around a million, if reports are accurate, in the Iraq War, the two Iraq Wars. And these wars are immoral. Those people never attacked us, and we're not facing any threat. All of the wars since World War II have not been self-defense. These have been aggressions. Okay? Need to go. So I condemn the United States military itself. I think that they're living in a kind of an artificial groupthink bubble in which you convince yourself that you're defending the United States. What you're really defending is a global empire, a global system of economics and politics, and which I don't need. Now let me just wrap it up on the environmental issue that you overlooked. I don't want that base over here at all because it's a red-hot target for a nuclear strike, and if there's a nuclear strike, there's going to be a lot of fallout, and me and my family are not going to be safe over here. I live in Kirkland, not far enough. I don't want that thing anywhere around here. It's making me less safe. It's just dangerous. I don't like you guys. I want you to just downsize the whole thing. I don't think there should be any Trident submarines. Sorry.
Next speaker is Priscilla White. That's what I've got down here.
Barbara Zepeda?
Oh, nope. I've got Priscilla White is next.
Oh.
Sorry. Followed by Barbara Zepeda. You're next. That's a good seat.
We find it absolutely extraordinary that you who assail the seven seas would hold this hearing so close to both the Earth Day and Easter holidays. For you with your naval weapons testing have been engaging in dangerous shell games aimed at the gullible American populace that finances them, turning their celebrated environment a darker shade of green in hopefully what will become an increasingly silent spring. One is mysteriously silent as the mainstream media concerning this alleged public hearing We have always found selling out superior to shelling out, and so for this, we offer a 21-gon salute to the U.S. Navy with hopefully no explosive charges, particularly those for war crimes involved. This corporate canonization may also serve to resurrect the 11.5 million marine mammals that you of the U.S. Navy will have taken out some years from now, including the many cetaceans, which literally will perish beneath the radar, as well as the many land-based bipeds who will perish from maladies less traceable to your depleted uranium, white phosphorus, and unspecified weather weapons that include not only typhoons but horrorboons. We also applaud that well-named commercial military agency, NOAA, which stays afloat by robo-signing off on your many man-made deluges worldwide. What others consider an abomination, we consider a money bomb that simply radiates corporate profits, hopefully less traceable by accounting detectors than by all of the radiation detectors your colleagues in the U.S. government have recently removed. More such nuclear bomb-loading docks must be built immediately at Bangor so that Hiroshima, Nagasaki, and Fukushima can readily reproduce like rabid radioactive Easter bunnies escaping from their pens to defecate the earth and line our ever-deepening corporate pockets, as well as those of your bell bottoms, with their filthy lucre as the pockets of the American people are being increasingly emptied with useless military expenditures while basic government services are, like them, being eliminated. We of the few world order think at high time as well as high tide that those who live in the homeland security-designated constitution-free coastal zones under maritime martial law learn their place in that larger constant-free zone, the land of the fee and home of the nave, to say to the U.S. Navy regarding Bangor nuclear submarine base with fetless abandon, "We who are about to fry salute you." The hidden hand of the market salutes you now as well. Treason's greetings to all, and to all a good night.
Next speaker is Barbara Zepeda.
Yeah, I worked at Boeing...
Could you just state our name? I know it's just a formality.
Barbara Zepeda.
Thank you.
Z-E-P-E-D-A.
Thank you.
And I worked at Boeing when they turned the KC-135 into the 707. That was the nicest thing that ever happened to Boeing because they were forced to compete in the world with a, something the world needed, a plane. And evidently, that plane lasts longer than our stadiums, and it evidently is going to last longer than the 50 years that this cement dock for nuclear submarines is going to last. Since, previous speakers have said really what I want to say, but there was a comment in the EIS from the people who were in the, in the EIS that you've put out, the scoping of it, that the costs were not calculated. I tried to find out, if anybody here knew what the cost of a Trident submarine was, the maintenance cost, then I couldn't... At least we got a range of $500 or $700 billion, which you have to double because every dollar's borrowed, on the cost of the dock. But the problem is what nuclear submarines cost, and what they cost with dollars, ecology, and economy. And the only way you can understand how much it costs is that there is nobody that can give me what it costs to decommission a nuclear submarine. Nobody. And I've lived in Hanford, my mom worked there, she died of cancer of the pancreas, but I've, even the people there can't tell you how much it costs because we haven't cleaned up one single nuclear piece of garbage yet. I'm going to ask people here to take out their pencils and write down this name. Dr. Alexey A-L-E-X-E-Y Yablakov, Y-A-B-L-O-K-O-V, Y-A-B-L-O-K-O-V. He is the nuclear scientist that oversaw Chernobyl during its construction and during its mess, and he's written a book that is very hard to get a hold of, but try.
All right. Our next speaker is Norm Kegel.
Norm Kegel. There's one glaring omission in the draft EIS. There's no mention of release of radioactivity, of risk of radioactivity. And you might think, as you wandered around the next room, that why should you worry? There's no nuclear material because no mention. I don't see the word "nuclear" mentioned at all. In the whole draft EIS, there's one mention, a secret document mentions nuclear. But we all know that there are nuclear missiles there, nuclear bombs. And as we saw last month in Japan, the combination of nuclear material and an earthquake zone The documents put out by the Navy talk about supporting the Trident submarines for at least 30 years. And I want to point out to you that in 30 years, nuclear weapons could be abolished. There is two, two promising signs. One is the New START Treaty that was recently ratified by the Senate, and, which is reducing the number of weapons that we have as well as Russia. And if that continues, and I hope it will, by 2042, there may be no nuclear weapons on this planet, and therefore no need for a wharf to handle them. And another one is that there's an organization of mayors around the world that was started off by the mayors of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, which is against nuclear power. And their aim is to abolish nuclear weapons by the year 2020. That's a very ambitious plan, and I hope that they succeed in that.
I'm going to read ahead again the next few names so you know where you are coming up. John Rogers will be followed by Mary Gleistim, it looks like, then Heather Sim, Leonard Iger, and Scott Schock. So John Rogers?
My name is John Rogers. I'm an unemployed inside machinist. I have repaired a number of naval vessels in my career. I have fixed valves and a number of other pieces of machinery on, on frigates and AOLs. But what I would like to be doing is working on a merchant fleet. This country needs a merchant fleet. That is the kind of ship we need. We need to have international trade, and we need to have products to export. We need our own ships to carry those products. We do not need to spend more money on submarines and other warships that we dare not use. That is a very poor use of our money. We are losing our prosperity, we're losing our future, we're losing everything so that we can blow this whole world up. I think that's a very poor use of our money. There may have been some need for defense at one time, but now it looks like it's a bit crazy. As I can see it, we are making a very big mistake. Let's think a little bit more about where we're headed. I think where we're headed is hell, so let's think about it. I beg you to do that. My fears, if they are ever to come to pass, scare me because if I should say "I told you so," it will mean the same thing as "Goodbye."
My name's Mary Gleistim. I live in Kingston, and I actually attended the Paulsboro hearing but didn't speak. The reason I didn't speak was because I had the feeling that the EIS process is ineffectual in its window dressing and a political system which seems more and more controlled by military and corporate interests. Citizens' concerns about environmental issues are duly recorded, but the real issues are outside the scope of the hearing. The problem it seems to me is that there is no place to raise the real issues, so we must raise them at every opportunity, or we forfeit whatever power we have as citizens and whatever integrity we have as individuals. The real issues, as I see them, are that our country is bankrupt. We cannot provide decent housing, health care, and education for our people. Money, energy, and other materials to the tune of $700 million spent on a redundant wharf results in the fact that there are fewer resources available for meeting the needs of the people on the planet. The fact that the Navy is withholding from public review, the rationale for the expenditure of more than $700 million, and the cost-benefit analysis of a second wharf on the West Coast makes tonight's exercise seem futile. Common sense questions like, "Why not station seven subs at Bangor and seven subs at Kings Bay instead of eight at Bangor and six at Kings Bay," which would seem to lessen the need for additional operational hours at Bangor, won't be answered. We need to continue to demand answers to the big questions and accountability from our government for its spending priorities, or we acknowledge that our democratic process is irreparable and that the hopes and ideals of our country will never be fulfilled. So we must continue to ask, in a world of shortages, why do we need the wharf, which can fairly be described as existing for a weapons system that is obsolete, dangerous, expensive, illegal, and barbaric? Two years ago, I wrote a guest editorial for the North Kitsap Herald in response to the first scoping meeting for this project, and the issues that I tried to raise there largely haven't been addressed, and I will just raise them again. In addition to the usual adverse environmental impacts of constructions of a project of this magnitude, traffic noise, pollution, the proposed increase in wharf activity will result in additional marine traffic, submarines, construction barges, tugs, and other vessels, adding pollution to the water and disturbing marine life in the canal. The Navy's failed to address the safety risks of increased explosive handling activity at the site and the additional potential for accidents while moving nuclear missiles from submarines, loading them onto trucks, and transporting them to and from the shore. The rocket propellant on a single Trident is way too dangerous for us to take this risk.
Thank you. Next speaker is Heather Sim.
Good evening. That's Heather Trim, T-R-I-M.
That's a R, sorry.
I work at People for Puget Sound on toxic pollution and shoreline health for the entire sound. Hood Canal is a treasure, as is all Puget Sound and the Straits. The area that is being proposed for this, this new facility is, has extremely high-quality eelgrass beds, and the whole Hood Canal, as well as this area, is home to endangered species. People for Puget Sound has been engaged in the fight in recent years to oppose a similarly large pier that was the Red Hill Gravel Mine in Hood Canal for the exact same reasons that we're concerned about this one as well. Overwater coverage, this is 6.3 acres of overwater coverage that's proposed. Another concern that I didn't really see very well addressed in the document is the issue of artificial light in the evening in terms of the impact on wildlife and how that would actually be addressed. Nor, when I asked at the open house, was there a great answer about the issue of the overwater coverage in the shallow area in terms of solid, solid topping versus grading and allowing light through in the shallow area, in that area of very high-quality eelgrass beds. A key question is, the Saquamish tribe in the scoping document letter that they sent you, which is, was dated July of 2009, and they were concerned, as we are, about their treaty fishing rights, asked, "Why would you not, after you complete this new term, new facility, demolish the existing one?" Your own calculations show that the new facility would in fact take care of your existing needs, and you would have a lot more operational days on the docket with having the two facilities there. That is a lot of overwater coverage that would be sort of the new net increase, and we'd like to see not that new net increase in overwater coverage. This is a facility that will have a significant cumulative impact on Puget Sound, contrary to the way it's stated in your document. We, and we hope the Navy and all the other federal agencies, are working very hard to restore the health of Puget Sound right now. It has been damaged by decades of small cuts that add up. This is another example where this could be that kind of problem, so we hope that you guys will take these comments very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Iger?
Evening, Leonard Iger. It's E-I-G-E-R. The draft environmental impact statement regarding the proposed Trident naval base Kitsap-Bangor explosive handling wharf is wholly inadequate because it doesn't consider the environmental impact of accidental... the environmental impact of accidental or purposeful detonation of the Trident nuclear and/or conventional explosives for which the Worf is designed. According to the DEIS, the purpose and need to construct a new explosive handling Worf at NBK-Banger is to support future Trident program requirements for the eight Trident submarines currently homeported at NBK-Banger and the Trident D5 strategic weapons system. Yet in its stated commitment to core values, the Navy's Strategic Systems Programs, SSP, author of the DEIS and private contract coordinator, vows to, quote, "Do what is right and honest and always tell the truth." The question that needs asking is not only whether the Navy needs a new EHW, but what is right and honest and who is telling the truth? As we speak, the disarmed-out ploughshares, two fathers, two grandmothers, and a sister, all elderly, are incarcerated in the Sea-Tac Federal Detention Center. Their crime was to enter NBK-Banger Base to peaceably put up a banner stating the truth, quote, "Disarm Now, Trident Illegal and Immoral," end quote. The SSP and Navy base their pursuit of a new EHW and the presumed legality of the life extension program for the eight Trident submarines homeported at Kitsap-Banger Naval Base to provide a, quote, "credible deterrent," end quote, until at least the year 2042. To be honest and truthful, we all know or should know that the vast and indiscriminate heat, blast, and radiation of any Trident nuclear weapon cannot be controlled in time or space. A credible deterrent is an active, ever-present, real, and fundamentally unlawful threat to unleash these weapons by accident or design. Trident is a grotesque weapon of mass destruction that inherently violates the Navy's own law of armed conflict, which prohibits any weapon such as the Trident that is incapable of distinguishing between civilian and military targets. We all have a legal obligation to pursue in good faith and bring to a conclusion negotiations leading to nuclear disarmament in all its aspects. Because of the continuing very serious contamination problems at Hanford Nuclear Sites, citizens of the state of Washington certainly understand that the corporations that profit from building new facilities or extending the lives of these weapons should be held liable up front for all accidents and harms from a Trident nuclear weapons system. There is clearly no reason for a new Worf because preparation to use or threaten to use the Trident system is fundamentally unlawful. The reality of the grave threat posed by the presence of these weapons in and from Naval Base Kitsap-Banger can no longer be denied. For practical and environmental reasons too, we need to get on with good faith, complete nuclear disarmament.
Thank you. Let me read ahead again the next speakers. After Scott Schock will be Mary Hansen, followed by Izumi Stevens, Barbara Tomlinson, and Dory Rainix.
Thank you. My name is Scott Schock, S-H-O-C-K. I'm a civil environmental engineer with an active student of economics as well. I've done work at Bangor on groundwater remediation when I was with a prior firm. I've also worked with Navy folks at CB folks at ADAC Alaska. I appreciate the professionalism of Navy personnel that I've worked with. I'm here representing family and neighbors on Hood Canal. My family owns properties there. I own a property on Thorndike Bay that overlooks Bangor. I'm a nervous neighbor of a nuclear weapons facility. Some concerns that I have. Visual impact of the huge buildings, first of all. There's an obvious huge structure there that I look at every day when I'm there. And adding another larger one next to it is not something to look forward to. Noise impacts of a four-year construction project and the marine impacts are a concern to me. The potential impacts on shellfish safety of turbidity, what's going to be stirred up that's been buried in those sediments, you know, under natural recovery, buried under cleaner sediments when you stir those up? What contaminated sediments are going to be released? And is my shellfish on my beach going to be safe? Is earthquake engineering built into this facility plan for a major earthquake that this region is potentially capable of receiving? Will earthquake engineering be retrofit into the existing structure so that we don't have a nuclear accident because of an earthquake event that could happen here in a serious event? I have not heard a clearly defined explanation as to why the Navy can't work with the existing I believe we don't need an additional facility. We cannot afford the additional facility. The no-action alternative is not clearly explained as to why it cannot be made to work. And as a taxpayer, we have a failing dollar which was making new lows this week. No one wants our debt. We're losing our reserve currency status. We, as Americans, need to start to think differently. We need to think creatively about how to do more with less because we're going to be forced to. Our dollar is failing. We're going to have a currency crisis and hyperinflation is coming. We must be prepared to deal with it creatively. That is the bottom line. I'm appreciative of professionalism, but we have to start thinking differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Hansen?
Thank you for holding this hearing. I appreciate it. And thank you to everybody who's here. I really appreciate seeing how many people are here because that's a real sign of hope for me. We never should be ashamed of the fact that we haven't gotten rid of the whole Trident mistake. It's just something we have to do in the future. That's all it is. We're human beings and we made a mistake in 19, whatever it was, you put out the dates, but anyway, when the Poseidon came and then later when the first Tridents came in the early '70s, nobody had the seismic information that we have now. It's that simple. So they made a decision to put the Trident base there. But now we know, we have three different kinds of earthquakes. A 9.0 is actually likely. I talked to seismologists back in the '80s because I had this concern because I used to live in California and I actually moved here to get away from the earthquake danger. Oh, boy. Interesting. But in any case, the effect of constantly working with missile motor fuel and live nuclear material on this Worf over the years, when we are in an area where a 9.0 earthquake is likely, doesn't make sense. We have to remedy that mistake. The decision to put the Tridents at Bangor is a mistake that needs to be remedied. And I also feel, in the meantime, there are some ways to make the situation safer. Obviously, I'm opposed to building the Worf. But I also am opposed to the practice of using live missiles with warheads. In the time between now and when we actually get rid of the Tridents, I think that it is only safe to do whatever practice is done without using live missile motors and live nuclear weapons. And I feel that storing them in a way that can withstand a 9.0 earthquake, in a place that can withstand a 9.0 earthquake until they can be disassembled, is the only rational way to deal with the situation. I'm also for a very high level of diplomacy, us and the Russians recognizing what a mistake nuclear weapons overall have been and getting rid of them. Thank you for your attention.
You didn't state your name at the beginning. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Mary Hansen?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Izumi Stevens?
I'm Izumi Stevens. My country has suffered right now very much. Ice quake, tsunami, and nuclear leak. And evacuated people, 20 kilometers. Some people there because they cannot abandon, maybe senior people or maybe livestock animals. This is a very scary situation. Even my family live in Tokyo. That is absolutely fear, fear, fear. So people is really scared about it. My country, twice we had disaster. So one is obviously Nagasaki-Hiroshima. The second is Fukushima Daiichi right now. So it's why right now we have to do this nuclear weapon. I don't understand. Nuclear weapon is not defensive weapon. That is obviously killing people. And we have to go to peaceful life, peaceful world. I'm so expecting United States is a country to be leader for this world, be provide peace. It's not the killing of people. That is my expectation. That's why I came to this country. Ironically, my husband was Defense Department. So I love you guys because you guys helped, you know, my country's people. Navy is very close to my house and, you know, always I'm expecting. But anyway, $700 million, please invest investment for kids, education. That is we need. We need more future. We don't need weapon in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Tomlinson?
There's this kid's question, what if they gave a war and nobody came? The simplest thing to do is the no, right now, for the immediate future, is the no-action alternative. Leave the eel grass alone. Leave the baby salmon alone. No pile driving, driving the neighbors crazy. Just do nothing. Instead of increasing the Worf, decrease Trident. We don't need that many Tridents. I don't see it at all. We have this mindset, bigger is better. No, bigger is not always better. I've heard wonderful things said here, you know, and I endorse them all, but the simplest thing is, right now, for the moment, to do nothing. Then we can figure out how to go about, you know, doing some more positive things. This book just came out, Confronting the Bomb: A Short History of the World Nuclear Disarmament Movement, and it brings a lot of research to bear on the fact that it states that deterrence did not come from the governments. It wasn't, remember MAD, Mad, Mutual Assured Destruction? That was not where deterrence came from. Deterrence, the fact that we didn't have a huge nuclear confrontation so far, was because of the international ban the bomb movement, not because of what governments did, but because of people's movement pressuring their governments all over the world, Russia and Europe and Asia, as well as in the United States. And so that movement so far has been a success. Deterrence is a myth. I mean, when it comes to, you know, confrontation, bristling with weapons, that is a myth and a fairy tale. And it's not the way it really works. We need to, as people said, think differently. Thank you very much. Bye.
The next speakers will be, looks like Dorley Rainix, followed by Gabrielle Lavalley, Tom Shea, Kathleen Wall, and David Hall.
Hi. I'm Dorley Rainey.
Can you pull the mic up just a little bit? It was put down there. There you go. Thank you very much.
Is that better?
That's fair. Thank you.
I'm Dorley Rainey.
Thanks.
And I want to congratulate you on your beautiful illustrations of animals, of fish, of the orcas, and of the starfish, which you swore to protect in your EIS. You have all the right words on how we're going to protect all these wonderful animals. We're going to stir up the ground way down under the water to really turn it up good, to bring up all the residue from former oil and other spills. And we're going to protect these animals. And if we succeed in protecting a few orcas, we'll be really well off and then we can use them. And we put microphones on them and sonar devices and we can send them so that they can go and kill other people's submarines. Now, that's really commendable. And I would say what you should be doing is to go with the no option. And the day after you make that decision, there in December or whenever, you have to start trying to figure out how you're going to take care of the nuclear waste out of your current Tridents. Where are you going to dispose of them? Are you going to truck them to Hanford where they don't know what to do with it either? So start working on that in your environmental impact statements. Where are you going to store all this nuclear waste when you finally figure out that maybe the Trident is obsolete and should be dismantled?
Gabrielle Laval?
My name is Gabrielle Laval. And I must first say that I am totally against this project. It is a complete waste of taxpayer money and natural resources. And I agree with my fellow citizens here speaking out against this project. I'm very concerned about the impact to endangered species in this area. And I cannot trust those whose salaries are dependent upon the Navy and that I don't believe they would provide enough oversight, having actually seen a project in my own city and spoke with the construction workers about the impact they were having on trees and they didn't care. I spoke to every different person involved with that project and there was no change in how they dealt with that. And I have a feeling that that's the same type of thing that happens over this type of project. And I don't think there would be any citizen oversight that would not be receiving a paycheck from the Navy or the government. So that's one of my main concerns about the project. And then the fact is that I can't, oh, okay. And then I want to say, oh, why I can't trust anyone who would be employed in this immoral occupation of perpetuating the myth that nuclear weapons will somehow protect us. Washington State is my home, as it was my mother's and my grandmother's and my grandparents' before me. And will you consider me as part of the environmental impact? I'm a living, breathing mammal and I am being adversely affected right now, my blood pressure. And I'm emotionally affected and I'm going to be financially affected. I'm one of the youngest people in this room. And is there going to be social security for me? Am I going to have Medicare? I'm currently paying into it, but this whole military is, 50% of our dollars go to it. And I'll just say that adding another $782 million, which I believe will be And I'll just say that adding another $782 million, which I believe will be at least a billion, is just going to be a disgusting display of the arrogance of the United States' government and its military. And this military does not protect me or my interests. And I ask each of you involved in this foolish and absurd venture to consider questioning the need to continue aiding and abetting in this pillaging of the American people for your own benefits. And I want to thank you for letting me speak. And I think it must be uncomfortable, I tried to make you uncomfortable, the people I spoke to in the other room, to have to directly face someone like me who opposes your criminal pursuits.
Next speaker is Tom Shea. Are you okay?
I'm going to use this Oreo cookie.
Could you just state your name for me, please?
Tom Shea.
Thank you.
Got that right. As a sort of metaphor for my few minutes. Respectfully, you represent the brown part. It's hard and it's altogether. What I want to talk about is how you hear and how I hear. You hear from the positioning of having a job, and a job that you like, at least to the one person I talked to. And you're employed and find your work fulfilling, or you wouldn't be there, I'm sure. I represent the white part, grandparent of 14 with a 15th coming. So 10 parents, three of whom are unemployed, they lost their jobs. They'd like to work. They did work. They lost their jobs because of our economy. And two others are on the edge of that. So that's part of the people here. And how we hear and how you hear might be very different. You're the hard part. We're the white sticky part in between. The wharf is the hard part. And it's being driven into like the soft sand. 1,250 piles being driven into the sand. A house built on sand. Relative to where the, what the wharf is serving, is that part of, is anywhere in here, the larger environment that numbers of people have spoken here? Those, that wharf is serving something that's going out into the ocean, which has its own, these Trident submarines have their own impact on the environment, on the water. So you're connected, you're all connected. The wharf is connected with something. That's like, the wharf, oh, there's just a wharf, and it's just how it's going to build, and so all this good stuff about it. But it's on a white paste that is out there, the ocean. In fact, I'm going to get, I was recommended to get this Northwest Training Range. What happens when a submarine goes out and shoots a missile up, practice or not? Where does that go? The person I talked to said, well, some they retrieve and some just go into the ocean. I got to give a question to you before I leave. Does this statement in any way measure the amount of energy that goes into those power drivers for five years, 200 or whatever days a year? Is that in the statement? How much energy is there? And finally, a recommendation. When you're talking about environment, it's probably not a good idea to have bottled water in plastic bottles. Thank you.
We hope you all made use of the recycling bins, however.
I brought my own.
Thank you. The next speakers will be Kathleen Wall, Dr. David C. Hall. I'm having difficulty reading this one. It looks like Fred Fellman and Glenn Milner. So Ms. Wall?
Kathleen Wall. I came here tonight to greet my fellow citizens and to the people who represent the Navy. I am a citizen of the city of Seattle. I live between the Banger submarine base and the Hanford Nuclear Reservation, like many of us do, most of us. I am, first of all, deeply impacted by this weapon system and by the whole nuclear system. And so is every creature, down to the tiniest, every plant. And as we speak, God knows what plume is heading our way. I would say to you that an explosive handling wharf, by the very name, speaks of something unthinkable. And two kinds of explosives, at least, will be there when the workers are working on those wharfs. The wharf we now have and the wharf that is in the planning stages. The nuclear missile motor, the missile motor explosive as well as the nuclear explosive. I believe, and I have no proof of this, that if there was an explosion of the missile motor propellant, it could set off a nuclear weapon, the heat. A missile motor propellant is a very strong explosive. I do know that. The dangers are enormous, and we're talking about doing more of it. So I will say to you that I was here in the water to stop the first Trident submarine, the Ohio, when I was 45 years old. I am now 73. And I will spend the rest of my life being impacted by this weapon system and by the nuclear weapon and nuclear technology in general, because that's what you have asked of me. I beg you, I beg you to reconsider. And I beg every one of you to take that message and the message you've heard here tonight out to the world. Thank you very much.
David Hall?
My name is Dave Hall. I'm a child family psychiatrist, a past National President of Physicians for Social Responsibility. And I'm here specifically this evening to say hello to Pete Dawson. I wanted to meet you. I would love to get a chance to chat with you as we did with Mark Olson a little while ago. I'm also one of the core members of the Ground Zero community that has our backyard fence, your fence at Banger. I'm here with a difficult mission because I have very split loyalties in making comments here. My grandfather took the first ambulance corps from the West Coast to the First World War. My father, who was a surgeon, spent two and a half years in the Navy as a lieutenant commander of a landing craft, which was the first hospital response following the wave of American soldiers going back through the Pacific. He was the one that went to the beaches and made the medical decision about who would go back to the hospital ship and who would stay on the beach. I was born nine months after he got home. My uncle, his younger brother, died on an American destroyer in Suba Bay in 1942 at the hands of a Japanese torpedo. I have spent my career since graduating from medical school trying to serve my country in the ways that my family has served the country. I feel great affinity with those of you in the Navy who spend your careers for the protection and the safety and the welfare of the American dream. I have great respect for Navy professionalism. We absolutely rely on your professionalism with these horrible weapons that you are assigned to service and to protect, to keep them safe. You know about the accident in 2003? These sorts of things put all of us in the local community at potential risk. But the question that I want to raise here, and I understand this is outside the scope of the E I S, because the scope of the E I S is way too narrow for the questions we want to raise here. The question I want to raise is how do we find common ground? How do we find common ground? I worked with an organization who sent physicians in 1985 to speak with President Gorbachev of the Soviet Union and helped to convince him that nuclear weapons could never be used. It was a part of Gorbachev's decision to downscale the Soviet weapon system, and it eventually led to the end of the Cold War. These weapons should have been eliminated at the end of the Cold War. They're still with us. We're still here to try to say, what can we do to prevent the horror that the nuclear weapons that we have to handle still because of American policy at Banger? What can we do to keep them from ever being used again and to assist in their being eliminated? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it's Fred Fellman? No, not here. He left? Okay. That would bring up Glenn Milner.
My name is Glenn Milner. I have to say that this is actually a lot more frustrating of a process than I thought it would be. It's painful to me to see my fellow citizens speak about a $780 million or $782 million project that's so close to their lives and they have three minutes to speak. I think there should be more time than that. I prepared a statement and my, I tried to pare it down as much as I could. It's not even close. I wanted to for sure state that I have a draft E I S for the Trident base when it was first proposed. And almost 37 years ago to this date, it was April 19th, 1974, the Navy conducted a scoping meeting in Silverdale. I also noticed, I don't know if that's the way things are going these days, but they had five minutes to speak at that, at that scoping meeting. There's two people that I've known over the years and I admired that made statements that day. And I hoped to be able to say more of what they said, and I'll just give them a couple of seconds, and I hope they forgive me. Marie Bernard, lived in Seattle. What Marie said on April 19th, 1974, was that most of the time I have heard how much the Navy was trying to protect the flora and fauna and the water and any pollution in the area while their main intent is to kill human beings across the water and to other countries. Erwin Hoganauer is also a person that I greatly admire. He was there that day. Well, yeah, he was that 37 years ago. He said, "No one wants war, and yet we seem to do everything possible to hasten its coming." This is what the proposed expansion is of the present base will do. What is made secure by escalation of military might. My point's this, 37 years, this is 37 years ago, and we're still talking about the same things. We need to cut back on the submarines. We're, you know, today, we're trying to have a more advanced submarine base and a more advanced missile. We need to cut back. What I'd like to say is also is the draft E I S, which is supposed to be an open record, does not provide enough information for meaningful discussion. We're expected to accept the Navy's need without ever knowing the issues involved. I'm going to, I'll just hold up briefly. This is actually what, this is an arc map for the explosive handling wharf. This actually has the second arc on it for the second wharf. This was given to me, you know, seven years ago, eight years ago or so. But we can't talk about it now. This is another arc map. This is where, when they first upgrades the D-5, they moved a building to be out of that area. This is the type of thing that should be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milner. Is there anyone who has not spoken tonight who would like to speak, who's been encouraged or inspired by others? Then if you would just come on up, she'll hand you a card. You can even fill it out afterwards if you'd like. All I need for you to do is just give me your name. Why don't you pull the mic down so it's closer to you, too? There you go.
My name is Carol Milner. This is your future. This is mine. I'm a first-time grandmother. I expect to see more of these. I expect her to have an education, and I expect her to have health care, and I expect her other things that I had and more. And she's not going to have it with this.
Could you get her to fill out the card? Yeah. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to come up? You've already spoken, have you? Can I, can I make sure that we've heard from everybody first?
He can have my card.
No, he actually can't. Would you like to come up and speak? You're welcome to.
Do you want me to stand next to you?
I really don't want to play games. I'm trying to find out, is there anyone else here who would like to speak who hasn't spoken yet? Okay. All right. Again, all I need is your name, and if you could fill out a card afterwards. Thank you very much.
My name is Lisa Marcus. And, oh, what do I need to say? I really appreciate what everyone else has said. It's been wonderful. And I was reading an article, the New York Times said that the Pentagon has wasted like $80 billion or some huge number. And I'm thinking, what happened to that money? And now you want, you're asking, you want to spend more? It's like, hello?
Okay. We're actually right up against nine o'clock. I, I'm going to let you go. Just hang on. I just want to point out to people who, if you did park in the lot underneath, that they close at 9:30. So if you're not out of by 9:30, you're going to need to take a bus or get a ride with somebody else, okay? So I just want to warn you about that. So sir, if you'd just state your name, and you said you had one question?
Scott Schock, yes. The last speaker mentioned unaccounted-for money. I believe Donald Rumsfeld has indicated that there's approximately $1 trillion that are unaccounted for in the U.S. military. Now, the point I wanted to make is the $780, whatever million dollars it is, I mentioned earlier that we're going to be facing hyperinflation in this country very soon. This money will not construct the planned wharf because it's a four-year construction project. You're going to be facing hyperinflation. You will not have the funds to complete the project. The U.S. government, the U.S. Congress will not be able to fund additional money to complete the project because we are bankrupt as a nation. We'll not be able to produce and sell the debt that we've been funding our country with. I'm trying to make it clear, we have to change our thinking because we're going to have to do more with less because our currency is failing, okay? I need you all to understand that because you're not going to be able to build the wharf with the funds that you've got.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Schock. It is now nine o'clock. Time for the end of the public hearing. I want to remind you guys just of a couple of things again, besides to get out of the garage by 9:30, which is that these have been very great comments for us to hear, but they're only one way. I happen to know that only about 5% of the public in the U.S. is comfortable with public speaking. The other 95% aren't. So if you're one of those, or if you have comments, obviously, that couldn't fit within the three minutes, you're welcome to make as voluminous written comments as you would like. They will all be read, they will all be considered, and they will all be part of the record for the final E I S. So thank you very much for coming tonight, and we appreciate you being here. Good night.